Let's hope that on some occasion we can meet again. I don't know when it will be, but I'm gambling June or July. Cheryl, would you like to carry out a roll call to determine who's present at the meeting, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm going to call everybody's names out. If you could just confirm you're present when your name is called. Roger Buttery.
Present.
Councilor Mark Whittington.
Present.
Thank you. Gerry Torton.
Present.
Kim is just running a few minutes late, Chairman, so when she's here, I'll announce that she's present. David Vickers.
Present.
Thank you. The following officers are also in attendance. Andrew Crocombe, Executive Director for Resources; Joe Ray, Head of Pensions; Eunice Gadra, Business Development Manager from West Yorkshire Pension Fund; Michelle Grady, Assistant Director of Strategic Finance; and Claire Mackey, Accounting Investment and Governance Manager; and I'm Cheryl Evans, Democratic Services Officer. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And can I just welcome Michelle, who's, I think, attending the first meeting of the pension, her first meeting of the pensions board. So, welcome, Michelle.
Thanks very much, Chair.
Okay. No apologies other than Kim, who will be joining. So, can we go on to Declaration of Members' Interests? Members to declare any interest using the chat function to request to speak, please. Any declarations?
Yes, Chairman, we've got Gerry Torton wishing to speak and councillor Whittington.
Gerry, do you want to go first, please?
Yes, just to declare that my wife is a deferred member of the pension fund scheme.
And Mark?
Thanks, Gerry. My wife is in receipt of the pension fund. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, shall we move to item three? Minutes of the meeting held on the 15th of October 2020. Pages three to eight of the agenda pack. Can I propose that the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 15th of October be confirmed as a correct record, please? Could I have a second there?
I'm happy to second that, Mr. Chairman.
Right, thank you, Mark. Would all members of the board turn on their cameras so we can ask you to raise your hands so that we can confirm that everyone's happy with them? Gerry, yeah, that's fine. Thank you very much. So, I can confirm that the minutes are a true record of the last meeting, and I guess one day I'll sign them.
Thank you, Chairman.
You've got my electronic signature now, haven't you, Cheryl?
I have, Chairman, so I'll email you after the meeting, asking you to confirm that you're happy for me to use your electronic signature.
Okay, thank you. I know there's, I don't think there are any matters arising because they're all covered on the agenda. So, shall we move on to item four, the Pension Fund Update Report? And perhaps I could invite Joe to introduce herself and then present the report, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Joe Ray, Head of Pensions for the Fund. I'm going to assume that everybody has read this, so there are just a few areas that I would like to highlight. As you're aware, this is the standard quarterly paper. On section four, on page 12, that details a new risk that has been added to the risk register and approved by the committee this morning, where changes in legislation are not implemented correctly. Risk score has been assessed as being a four, with both the likelihood and the impact being at two. There are currently a number of changes in legislation that are under consultation or have come into force, which could cause difficulties if not implemented correctly. The key legislative risk at the moment that we face is the implementation of the 95k cap, which is explained in more detail at section six on page 15. I shall move on to that now, just to provide a bit more information about that. As you've previously made aware, new legislation was brought in by Treasury to cap exit payments in the public sector to £95,000. These regulations came into force in November 2020, on the 4th. And for the LGPS as a funded scheme, pension strain payments are included within that cap. Whilst the 95k cap is mainly an issue for the public sector employers such as LCC, there is a knock-on impact for the fund. Current LGPS regulations require that if a scheme member is made redundant at age 55 or over, they're automatically given an un-reduced pension. That means their pension isn't reduced by the actuary for the fact that they're getting it earlier than their normal retirement age. The cost of this to the fund is captured as a pension strain, and the employer is required to pay that directly to the fund at the point in time that that individual leaves. If this breaches the new cap, however, under the Treasury regulations, the pension should either be deferred or reduced. Therefore, the two sets of regulations at the moment are currently at odds with each other. The consultation from MHCLG issued in September on reforming local government exit, excuse me, exit pay, including amendments to align them to the Treasury regulations, was extended to the 18th of December. But this delay means that the LGPS regulations will not be amended until early 2021. MHCLG Minister Luke Hall sent a letter to all administering authorities in October that set out the view that the new exit regulations effectively curtailed the LGPS regulations when the cap was breached. The Scheme Advisory Board have also looked at this and set out its view, following legal advice, on the options for the funds. The fund has taken its own legal advice as to what it should do in the period before the LGPS regulations are amended, to ensure that it's protected as much as it could be, taking into consideration the minister's letter and the Scheme Advisory Board advice. And the course of action we're taking is set out in paragraph 6.7 on page 16 of the report. All employers have been notified of this course of action. There are a number of legal challenges currently underway about the introduction of the exit cap regulations ahead of the changes to the LGPS regulations. And there is also no guarantee that funders impacted by this will not go to the ombudsman to seek an un-reduced pension, where the fund may not be able to recover the strain cost from the employer. So, at the moment, all the LGPS funds and the LGA are keeping a close eye on how this unfolds. For section seven on page 16, this provides an update on the budget and business plan, excuse me for my coughing, that was presented in the March Business, March Pension Board Papers. Paragraph 7.3 explains the variances in the budget to the end of September 2020. The biggest difference that you can see there is where the fees, is in the manager fees, and this is because most fees are now not calculated until year-end, as the pool vehicle fees that we are mainly invested in are collected through adjustments to the net asset value of our holdings, rather than being raised as an invoice. Therefore, this is not a true reflection of fees at this point in the year, as we're only able to report on invoice fees until the year-end. An update on progress against the business plan is set out at paragraph 7.4. There's two areas there where we are behind schedule on the plan. One is the delay in receiving the audit opinion on the annual report and accounts, as has previously been reported. And the second is participating in the work of the Scheme Advisory Board, where progress on the good governance review has been delayed due to the pandemic. Both areas, though, unfortunately, are out of our control. That was all that I was going to cover in this report, but I'll happily take any questions.
Thank you very much, Joe. I think you'd better have a drink. Are there any questions, please? And perhaps Cheryl, you'll help me on this one.
I will, Chairman. Gerry wishes to speak.
Gerry, please.
Yes, just a quick one, Mr. Chairman. Joe, the Brexit risk obviously has been red. That's not being reduced now with the trade deal. I appreciate a lot of other outstanding issues, I guess, but the trade deal's been sorted. So, does that reduce the risk in any way on that area?
It hasn't reduced at this point. Hopefully, we can for the next paper. I think we're still, markets are still waiting to see how that pans out, because still a lot of the detail is not fully understood. So, we're hopeful that we'll be able to reduce that risk for the next quarter.
Okay, thanks.
I think as well, Gerry, in fairness to Joe and Claire, I guess these papers were written before Christmas and before the trade deal was done.
Yes, that's true. That's a fair point, yeah.
They were, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's fair. Okay.
Anything else, Gerry?
No, George, on that.
Dave, I think, were you wanting to raise a question?
Yes, please, if I may. Can I just clarify, Joe, with you, if I may, the 95k cap, is that, does that include a statutory redundant payment, as well as any enhanced benefits that a member may get? So, if you made redundant at 55, and you're entitled to a statutory redundancy, does that, if, does it count towards the 95k? So, it's not just enhanced benefits, it's the statutory benefit as well, or the statutory redundancy?
It is. It includes all exit payments.
So, there's no distinction between whether you're getting something more than the statutory, it's just an exit payment from any source, as such?
Yes, there are very few exceptions. At the top of my head, I can't recall. I think settlements, potentially, or kind of employment tribunal-type exits. But, yeah, anything on a normal redundancy, statutory and the enhanced and the pension strain for the LGPS all come into that calculation.
Okay, yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Chairman, Council Whittington wishes to speak.
Mark, over to you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just one question, Joe, relating to the budget on page 17. Just regarding the management fees, you said that the payment wouldn't be calculated until the year-end. Just wanted to just ask the question, just to check if you're happy that the, that the actual budget of £9,000, in your view, would be enough to cover the fees? That's all. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. The difficulty with setting budgets on things like manager fees is that they're dependent upon the asset value. So, I can probably guarantee that we will not hit that budget perfectly. Depending on what happens with markets, we may be well below, or we may be well over. The positive side of that is that, obviously, within the pension fund, we don't have the same budgetary concerns that the council would have, in that the money is there and is to be used to pay pensions and also to pay the cost of everything to do with managing the pension fund. So, management fees will always just be a shot in the dark based on what we paid last year, perhaps with some expectation of what market growth might be. Obviously, in volatile markets, it could go anywhere, unfortunately. So, I can't say with any assurance that that will be the correct budget that's been put in there. We're just trying to, in doing a budget, we're just trying to improve our reporting to the committee and to the board and to give them closer insight, rather than just in the year-end accounts as to what the costs of running the fund are.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Andrew, I wondered whether you could just update the board on the audit of the accounts. So, it's on page 18, please. I know it makes you cross, but...
Yeah, second time today, unfortunately. Yes, yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, so, yeah, unfortunately, the council's in a position where it didn't get its account signed off on time on the 30th of November, as we would both hope and expect. As a result of the way that, obviously, the pension funds accounts are published, which are part of the suite of the council's accounts, that means we haven't been able to publish the pension fund accounts either, even though they received a clean bill of health from the auditors. The reason for the delay was a valuation issue on the energy from waste plant in North Hycam. So, that facility's been open for six or seven years now, and we'd agreed a valuation method with our previous auditor, KPMG, which was satisfactory to them. Mazars and newer auditors, which, I mean, you've talked about at previous meetings in this board, have decided they aren't happy with that valuation. And we're currently going through a process with an independent valuer to assess the valuation of that plant. Anyone who's familiar with the plant will know it's a very massive and complicated asset, and there are various elements to it that need valuing. And that's why we need a specialist value. We're currently anticipating that we'll be in a position where we can discuss what this valuation figure comes back with, with the auditors, at the end of January, early February time, with a hope to, you know, with a fair wind, getting the account signed off at the end of February. But clearly, that is subject to a number of things, you know, falling correctly. I'm happy to take any questions on it, but naturally, we're very disappointed about that position, you know, having had a, you know, a history of, obviously, getting the account signed off on time and the like.
Thanks for that, Andrew. Are there any questions on that issue? I've got one. I don't know whether it's you, Andrew, or Joe, or both. But, a few years ago, I can't remember how many, perhaps three years ago, KPMG, who are the external auditors, used to produce two audit certificates, one for the pension fund and one for, you know, the county council's accounts. I just wondered whether there was any scope for bringing that back?
I might have to defer to Joe for her knowledge on the pension fund side of things, Joe, if that's okay. I can add anything to it, possibly.
Yeah, I know Claire has, we have spoken about this with Mazars, but because of the, Claire probably has a far more, a far better answer than I have. But basically, because of the governance statements, et cetera, that has to go in the council's statement of accounts, we don't have anything like that in the pension fund accounts. And at the moment, we have to have, that has to be included within, our opinion has to be included within the council's opinion. I don't know if Claire, you can add any more flesh onto the bones of that, because I know you've got an excellent reasoning as to why.
I'm happy to take that up. I believe that the specific explanation that we were given is that the statement of responsibilities that you sign, Andrew, in the front of the accounts covers the full document, regardless of whether, so in signing that, you are signing to release both the county council and the pension fund accounts. So, because one of those isn't ready, you can't put your signature onto that. Therefore, the two opinions must be given at the same time, and were bound by legislation to have those two sets of accounts in one document.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions on the Pension Fund Update Report?
Yeah, just something that's sprung to mind, Mr. Chairman, regarding the issue with having the accounts signed off. Andrew, or is there any sort of, I mean, you alluded to the fact that it could potentially be the end of January, sorry, so the end of February before they're formally signed off. Is there any sort of timeframe where, because I'm just obviously concerned that, you know, potentially, we could be in the position of signing them off just before we start the next year's accounts, accounts close down. So, no, I'm guessing they have to be formally signed off before you go into the next year's accounts preparation? Or am I wrong?
I'll answer the first question, and then I'll provide a, what I know from what's happened elsewhere. So, obviously, we had a productive meeting with Mazars just before Christmas, where we've all committed to working to resolve this as fast as we can. So, one of the, one of the reasons why we've leaked into January is because of the specialist nature of the supplier to do the valuation. Following our own procurement regulations, we had to go out and get three quotes to do that piece of work. So, that took a bit of time. We've obviously selected a supplier to do that piece of work now, and due to the complication of the work that talked about, that'll take a bit of time. And, you know, it's not a desktop exercise. It will require them having to do site visits to look at the various components of the plant. Once we've got that piece of work done, that valuer has to liaise with the valuer at Mazars, who've said that they're not happy with the way we're currently valuing it, to work out whether there's, you know, a common ground on what we're saying the valuation is. And that's the point that will take us into the start of February, we think. And that's a bit of the negotiation, whether everything's all right, and then whether we need to make any changes to the accounts. Because there's obviously two outcomes that still at the moment. The figure that the valuation comes back as might not be deemed to be material, in which case we wouldn't need to change the accounts. But if it is material, we would need to change the accounts. And then that would give two potential time options about when it would be resolved. In terms of, in terms of not signing off a set of accounts, well, there's local examples where accounts haven't been signed off for the current year or previous years. I know one of my previous employers has had objections to its accounts from a local elector for three years, therefore hasn't had three sets of accounts signed off due to those objections. Another useful stat for this year, I think, and Michelle will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think up to 50%, of accounts this year weren't signed off on time, I think. I think that was the figure that was quoted in the press. You know, clearly, Covid has had an impact, but I think there's almost, I guess, it comes to it, there's almost a thing around, because it's happening elsewhere, it's almost deemed to be acceptable not to sign them off on time now. And that's completely unacceptable, because obviously, the deadline's there for a reason. But in our specific case, I guess the assurance I can give the board is, we've committed with the auditors to resolve this as soon as is feasibly possible. And, you know, I, well, the chair said at the start about being annoyed. I'd be very annoyed if we've not resolved it by the time we've got to the end of the financial year, because that, something's not happened right at that point. And I think that's all I can say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks, Andrew. And I guess from our wider perspective as a county council, we're annoyed that Mazars waited until the last minute to actually raise this as an issue, when in reality, they had months to raise it as a potential concern.
Joe, can I just ask you a question, please? I'm conscious that of the Pension Board's responsibilities vis-à-vis the regulator, and I'm just wondering whether we ought to be reporting what I regard as a bit of a breach to the regulator and explaining the problem?
Yeah, I just wanted to actually add on to Cheryl's answer from a pension fund point of view. Our regulations actually don't require that we put the opinion in the accounts. So, we've actually met all our requirements. We've published the annual report with all the information that has to be in there according to our regulations. So, we're not actually in breach of ours. It is the fact that we put it in there because it's signed off, the accounts are signed off within the council's statement of accounts. Within ours, it's just that ours show consistency with the council's statement of accounts. But as I say, under our own regulations, it doesn't actually state in there that we have to publish it with that opinion in there. So, ours is published and was published by the deadline that we have, which is the 1st of December. So, we're not actually in breach of anything ourselves.
I'll perhaps talk to you outside on that one, because I'm just slightly concerned. That's all. I don't want a fine from the pensions regulator.
We have sent them to MHCLG, so, you know, our accounts have gone, our report and accounts.
Right. Okay, all right. Right, are there any other questions on the Pension Fund Update Report, please? I'll take the silence. No? In which case, can I propose that the report be noted and move on to the next item of business? Are you all happy with that? Okay, thank you. So, item five, and this is, Eunice, can I invite you to introduce yourself and then present the report, please? And perhaps you'll make it short and sweet on the basis that hopefully everyone's read it, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I will try and make it short. My name's Eunice Gadra. Although I'm titled Business Development Manager, I do have a new job title, which is Head of Governance and Business Development, effective as of a couple of months ago. But no change in role as yet. So, yeah, I'm from West Yorkshire Pension, for those that are new to the board. And we provide the pensions admin services to Lincolnshire. So, this is a quarterly report based on the performance, KPIs, and various administration updates, et cetera. So, the first part of the report is the KPIs for the last quarter, as you see from, as you can see from the table in the report. It's quite a good set of KPIs, considering, obviously, the situation we're in, everybody having to work remotely, in a different working environment, different internet speeds, et cetera. So, we're still very pleased that the performance is still pretty high in both in terms of KPIs and the number of cases processed. The only one really I'd like to kind of highlight is the transfer out quote, which is showing us 54%. And the reason why that one is low is because of the extra requirements from the pensions regulator, because of pension scams. In fact, I've seen an email this morning from the pensions regulator regarding funds having to do more to make sure safeguard members' interest members' pensions, because certainly during the current conditions, there is a lot more scammers out there looking for all kinds of ways to get their hands, or get members to transfer their pensions out to, obviously, what are not genuine schemes. So, because of the extra work we're doing to verify everything with the members and making absolutely sure they know what they're doing, and they're aware of the implications of transferring out as well, has impacted on the performance. So, what we're likely to do is revisit that particular KPI and look at whether we increase the target days, or whether we put in extra stages within the process that we use to monitor performance, so that we've got the best possible measure and measuring from when we're able to process cases, rather than at the moment, having to, what appears to be kind of low performance when it's actually not. Scheme information gives you details about the category of the makeup of the Lincolnshire Pension Fund, with details of joiners within the quarter and the numbers in the 50/50 scheme, et cetera. One thing we regularly do is survey our members, and you'll see attached is the response, summary of the responses we've received to this survey. Most of the comments we've got back are quite complimentary and pleasing. There is one negative comment regarding the delay in paying retirement benefits, but that was purely because we hadn't been notified of the retirement from the employer. So, we hadn't received details of the retirement itself. But once we received the details, then we were able to process the retirements straight away. But, and what we do when we process retirements is, we pay lump sums within the first three days of retirement, or within three days of when we receive the claim form back, and then the pension is paid with the next pension. So, in this case, the pension had already been, the pension for the particular month, June, had already been processed. So, the member didn't get the pension till the July payment. So, that's just purely timing of how it works, unfortunately. In terms of employer training, obviously, all employer training came to an abrupt halt because of Covid-19. Since then, though, we have now resurrected training, be online, a lot of it's now kind of webinars, and then we put in a little ch- And then we put in little chunks of online training on our website as well for members to access at any time, which I guess is is an advantage in that members can, rather than booking on particular trading courses, there's bite-sized topics already presented on our website. So members, employees can go in at any time and refresh their knowledge. Internal disputes. Just one, stage one appeal against the employer. And that was because a member wanted a previous retrospective service to count towards their membership. But because this was a relief post and they had to opt into the scheme and they hadn't done, then obviously this request was turned down. On the administration update, nothing much to report really in terms of remote working. Obviously still continuing for all organisations. Our office does still remain open for people either that don't have remote working facilities at home or people that actually need to visit the office for any genuine reason. And that could be, for example, running the payroll. Whilst we can run our pension payroll remotely because of the size of the payrolls, we do prefer to run the payroll from the office in case there's any issues, any IT issues. So whenever payroll is run, then we do have a few members of staff working in the office. But it's a large office with very few people attending on any given day. We completed our scheme returns by the fifteenth of December. So that went off to the pensions regulator as usual. No issues around that. During this time as well, we had our three-year recertification for our quality ISO nine thousand and one standard. Quite pleasing to report that that went very smoothly, very pleasing findings and no non-conformities. So we've now got recertification for an additional three years. But it still means that we do still get audited every year by ISO as well to make sure we continue to comply with the standards. Web registrations, you'll see a breakdown of the number of web registrations for members of, within the different categories. This is an area really where we will be focusing on now to get the numbers registered for my pension, which is the secure portal, because we do intend sending certainly starting up with annual benefit statements via the secure portal rather than physically in the post. And then potentially making that the normal form of communication between the fund and members. Obviously, to choose still to receive paper copies of the ABSs, then we will still provide that. On the technical issues, probably just two areas to highlight, one which Joe's already covered. So I'm not going to go into any detail on that, which is the ninety-five K cap, which we're, obviously the LGPS is at odds with the regulations, with treasury requirements, et cetera. So that is causing or can cause an issue. I won't say it's causing an issue because subsequent to the pensions committee this morning, I had a check to see whether we've had any impacted members. And fortunately, the answer is we've not had any cases which have actually breached. We would have had some cases way back in December because we had a big early retirement exercise with Leeds City Council. A number of employees were going out on early retirement. So Leeds City Council brought those people that would have been impacted, brought the retirement dates forward for those. So we were able to process those cases before the regulations came into effect. So as I speak now, there have been no cases where the ninety-five K cap has been breached. The other issue to mention really is the MacLeod. That's a big piece of work that's heading our way. And in anticipation of that, we are working with Civica, our software provider, certainly with the employers as well in terms of starting the process to request the information that we'll need. And we have set up an internal project group looking at the work that's required. So there will be an awful lot of work, but we're still waiting for legislation on that one. Which takes me to the shared service budget. As you can see from the budget, our budget for twenty twenty-one was sixteen pounds sixty per member. Current forecast period date is that that cost per member will be fifteen pounds and nine p. So that's quite a nice reduction on the cost per member and obviously to Lincolnshire in terms of a saving of over a hundred thousand potentially. So I'll leave it at that and take any questions.
Thank you very much, Eunice. Are there any questions, please?
Sorry, Chairman, Counselor, Wittington wishes to speak, and so does Gerry.
Mark, do you want to go first, please?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Eunice for the report. Just one question around the shared service budget. And obviously the sort of reduced forecast cost per member. I'm guessing, I must say, that's has that been caused because with people, with members of staff working from home, that overhead costs have reduced? And if they have, and people maybe continue to work from home post-Covid, if working patterns change, would we expect to see a similar reduction in future years or would the forecast cost per member increase once normal working practices are restored? Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. It's not impacted necessarily by people working from home because we've actually had to make a bigger investment in IT equipment. The majority of our workforce weren't equipped to work from home. So we've had to buy lots of laptops, double screens, et cetera. So there has been a big initial cost with not real any big reductions in savings as a consequence. I guess some of the savings have come from, A, the membership numbers, because we have taken on a number of new clients. We've taken on the London Borough Barnet as one of our LGPS clients. And we've taken on a number of fire authorities as well as additional clients. So that's certainly, obviously, made impact on the savings. And the other being, I guess, the number of vacancies we have. And those vacancies won't be there for any length of time really, because we are currently in the process of recruiting additional offices to fill some of those vacancies. And the reason to fill some of those vacancies, A, to provide more support. So I'm currently looking at recruiting an additional client relationship manager. Because whilst we have one for our fire clients, we don't have one for LG. And I know it's something Joe's been kind of pushing us for. So that will be a welcome boost to kind of strengthen our resources for our third-party administration. And then we've got a number of pensions officers that we're recruiting for, primarily in anticipation of the MacLeod work as well. And that certainly will increase our costs as well. So I don't think you could really say going forward our cost is going to be lower. Then it may well go up. In fact, it's probably likely to go up because of MacLeod and the additional staff we'll be taking on.
Thanks, Eunice. Thank you.
Right, Gerry, over to you, please.
Yeah, it was just a quick one on, Eunice has sort of answered, I think, to some extent. You've put a contingency for the MacLeod work in the forecast. You don't require a contingency with the exit cap. There's no retrospective work required on that, is there? It is just the current sort of current people who are retiring or leaving. There's no, I'm going to go back over previous levers or anything to see if there's that exit cap. No.
Oh, you can't do that, Gerry.
Well, some of these cases, well, some of this legislation does go back in time, doesn't it? It covers previous years.
MacLeod does. So that's going to be a big onerous job.
Yeah, yeah.
That will go back a number of years, two thousand and fourteen. So that would be a nightmare. But yeah, the ninety-five K will not be impacted.
And there's no real cost, you don't see any cost because obviously you're saying there's no cases at the moment anyway. So it's not an issue. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, Chairman.
No. Eunice, can I just pass on my thanks? Perhaps you pass them on to the team. I mean, I think I know you've commented on the TV quotes, but I think the targets that you've, that the team have hit, given the conditions, I think are excellent. So well done to all concerned. I think it's really good. So thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no more questions, are you all prepared to note the report and move on to the next item, please? Silence means yes, okay. And item six, data quality scores. This is you again, Eunice.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So this is the data quality scores, which are part of the TPR returns that we do in November. One of the requirements for the TPR is that we report on our common data score and scheme-specific data score. So common data score as of November was ninety-five point six-six and scheme-specific score is eighty-four point zero-three percent. While scheme-specific data is still lower than common, it is an improvement from last time round. And then I'll go through the reasons for the improvement as well. But if I can go through the report, again, I'll try not to take too long on this. Common data, the scores I would anticipate will be roughly around that whenever we measure common scores, because one of the biggest kind of reasons where common data will never be a hundred percent is missing addresses for deferred members. We've got three thousand two hundred and five records where we don't have a current address for deferred members. I'm hoping that once we get more members signed up on the secure portal, that that may change. Although we may never know, because if we're not sending correspondence out and it's all electronic, then it's going to be difficult to measure. Because the only time we know of missing addresses is when we get posts back. So that's an area we'll have to think about. But we do have a tracing bureau that we use to trace members whenever we get members lost contracts. But it's one of these kind of vicious circles where no sooner do you trace some and then you lose touch with some others. So that, I guess, is just a cycle that we go around. Within the scheme-specific, we've got things like missing earnings, missing care benefits, et cetera. Some of the reasons for those are that we are aware people have left, but we've not received their leaving notifications or it's work in progress. And we've not been allowed to process their benefits as well. So those are the cases where where we identified data mismatches. I guess the big numbers are one, two point four, which is start date inconsistency, where we've got five thousand records where the start date we hold might not be consistent with start date we hold in other record types. This could be where people have got transfers in, they've got breaks in employment or a strike break, et cetera. So this is likely to be just a case of tidying up the records. But because it's kind of deemed low-level work, then it's there and it's on the data improvement plan with a target date of when we expect to look at that particular area. Two point five is six and a half thousand records with missing national insurance contributions. So where, or GMP, and this is one of the biggest areas of failure as far as I'm concerned for our data score, is the GMP element. And the main reason for that really is that we don't hold GMP on one record in one field. For active members, it might be held in a separate area. For deferred members, another area for pensions somewhere else. So it's a combination of where to look for that amount. And whilst we've done some work and reduced the number by six thousand, because we had over twelve thousand records last time, there's still more work to be done in terms of identifying where that information is held. So this is more a programming issue rather than actually not having the information. I'm pretty comfortable that for all the records where we need a GMP, we've got a GMP or we've got a full set of NI history, which will work out the GMP when the member retires. I think those really, GMP-connected ones are the main ones. But you'll see attached to this report the data improvement plan. And within the data improvement plan, we've identified the number of errors and when and how we'll look to rectify those errors. So there's some deadlines, time scales, et cetera specified within the report. But because we're comfortable with the fact that we've got the data in the records when we process cases, we know where to look for the data when we do individual cases. So we're pretty comfortable with the fact that it's not something that's alarming us and something that we need to take urgent action on. You might tend to differ on my thoughts, but I'm happy to take any questions now.
Thank you very much for that, Eunice. Are there any questions, please?
Gerry wishes to speak, Chairman.
Gerry, over to you, please.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. It was something that Joe issued a couple of months back after the last meeting, that the scheme-specific scores are quite a lot lower. It's a difficult one for Eunice to answer, I suppose, but quite a lot lower than the other pension funds. They have improved, obviously, as you said. Have you got any thoughts on why Lincolnshire should be lower? Or is it just, it's difficult to answer, I suppose, when you don't know the other detail of the other funds, but it was just quite.
I think, Gerry, I think it's very likely to be because of the pensions admin system that we use, because we use Civica rather than the Alter system. The Alter system, and as I've highlighted in my report, it's primarily the GMP information. So in Alter, the GMP sits in one place. Whereas within Civica, because the system is configurable by individual funds, because the GMP is tied, so the different membership type, the GMP is held in different places. And that really is the main reason why we've not been able to pick every GMP information up from the members, because our programme, and again, I don't really kind of pick faults or anything like that, but our programme, our programmer is still kind of building up on his pensions knowledge. He's an IT expert. The programme we've written for the data quality improvement is an in-house programme, the one we've written ourselves. So there's still, I would say, a bit of fine tuning required to that particular programme and knowledge required by the programmer in terms of knowing the system inside out.
Okay, thanks.
Happy with that, Gerry?
Yeah, I think so, yes, yeah. I mean, it's difficult to comment because without knowing other funds details, isn't it? But yeah, all we can do is look to improve, which it has improved anyway. So just needs to keep improving, doesn't it? So yeah, thanks.
Mark, I think you want to ask a question, please? Mark?
Yes, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Yes, thank you, Chair. I noticed, Eunice, in the action plan, I'm referring to Appendix Two, where you sort of got a list of all of the sorts of issues and the and the progress reports and the deadline. I'm presuming that because you're using red and amber, that you're using traditional rag racing. And if you are, it's, it's encouraging, there aren't any reds. I'm just wondering if, certainly with, with, with the ambers, maybe the next time, if you could, what I always sometimes find useful on these is, is a kind of an arrow indicating the progress you're making, because obviously some of those ambers potentially could be quite close to green. And, you know, it ju-, just, 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 just potentially for next time, just, just give us a little bit of clearest to, to the direction of travel, might be useful. Apart from that, I'm fine. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I don't think there's anyone else. Just to say, Eunice, I don't know, you know, I've, I've, I've been the very critical one on, on this one, but I actually am encouraged with the progress that you're making. You know, if you look at March 20, it was 63, May 20, 76 or 77, now 84. Hopefully in six months' time, when we get the next report, it might be even higher.
It'd be in the 90s, fingers crossed.
Cheryl, perhaps we better minute that.
I made a note, Chairman.
I've got to do some work on it then.
Absolutely. If there are no more questions, I, I suggest we note that report and move on to the, the next item. Is that okay, everyone? I'll take silence, meaning yes. So thank you for that, Eunice. So, item seven. So can I invite Claire to introduce herself and present this report, please?
Hello.
Are you there? Yeah. Claire, you're on mute.
Hopefully that's better.
That's better.
This is the normal quarterly update that we provide on employer contributions, providing the board with information on those employers who've either submitted to us late or incorrect data. The report today covers the second quarter of 2021. The number of late payments and data submissions are set out in the table at the top of page 58. And these are analysed between the late payment of cash contributions, late submission of supporting data, employers who've made both late payment of cash and submitted data late, and those where the data and cash were submitted on time, but they didn't agree. As you can see, there are generally very few employers who pay their contributions late. The poorer area of performance remains the submission of data returns. And that's the detailed listing down to the individual member level. During the first quarter of the year, you may remember a large payroll provider to academies had experienced trouble submitting data returns. Following intervention from the West Yorkshire Pension Fund representatives, we seen some improvement into quarter two. However, moving into quarter three, their performance has deteriorated again. Throughout this period, the finance technician at the fund has been in contact with the associated employers and the payroll provider directly. And to tackle this further, the fund has written to all employers affected by these issues, just reminding them about their responsibilities to submit accurate and timely data and payments to the fund. We also saw during quarter two, a small number of late contributions in August associated with submission date falling on the weekend and a small number in September again for changes to payroll providers, particularly to academies. Individual detail of employers who were late during the quarter are set out at Appendix A. If we look now at the bottom of page 58, Table Two sets out the fines which were issued during the quarter. And as you can see, there have been four of those during this period. And I'm happy to take any questions on the report.
You're muted, Chairman.
I am. Thank you, Cheryl. Despite having a note which says mute button. Claire, I, I guess I was really disappointed that someone like South Holland District Council paid their contributions late in, in July, oh, for July. I don't know whether you or Joe kind of had a word with the treasurer there, because I just think that is almost unforgivable. I'll name and shame.
We haven't, but they are potentially few and far between. It generally does fall to those smaller employers who maybe find it more difficult to have sufficient resources to do these things where we see problems. Or for example, the, the payroll providers who, they tend to cycle a little bit through difficult times sometimes.
Yeah. We had a pretty good start, didn't we, in April, May, June and well, we'll keep trying. As Joe said, I, I, I will never get the perfection that I want, but, but there we are. Any, any questions from anyone? Oh, I think Mark wants to speak. Mark?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Yes, thanks, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just to pick on, on your point about South Holland, but I noticed for September, South Caster Stephen District Council, where I'm also a member, managed to achieve their payments and data not matching. And, and again, I, I guess that's a little disappointing coming from a, you know, coming from a district council, because, yeah, you, you, I can, you can sometimes see potentially why academies, if they're changing, if they're changing payroll providers or the start of the year have got new starters and whatever, because, because obviously academies schools do tend to have quite a high turnover, potentially high turnover of staff. I can understand to a certain extent why parish councils may struggle. But district councils, I think I tend to share, agree with you, Roger, you've been disappointed, you know, with, with district councils who fail to sort of, you know, sorry, who, who fail. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, ma-, maybe you should speak to someone that I had noticed that South Caster, the, the, the payments didn't, and date didn't match.
It's because, because, because you kind of rather hope as part of the process, some, some reconciliation would have been made before the payment or, you know, the payment to the date was actually, was actually undertaken. Thanks.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree more. I couldn't agree more. But anyway.
I mean, certainly just to say, both of those employers, because they have missed the deadline for us, their finance and strategic contacts will have received an email from the fund setting out that there was a problem and requesting that they resolve that. So depending who they've chosen those contacts to be, it, it will be beyond the payroll department that have been notified about that.
Okay. Well, let's keep the pressure on. And if you ever want me to write another letter, then, you know, I'll do another letter. Anything to improve it.
Thank you very much. And we have our fingers crossed that actions that we've taken in the last few weeks will pay dividends in quarter four, but we'll, we'll pick that up again in March.
Okay, right, thank you. Are there any other, any other questions?
No, Chairman.
No, okay. Happy to note the report, move on to item eight. Now, item eight, I think I've got to say a few words on this one. So, and it was, it was kind of my request that we did this deep dive into Borders to Coast Pensions partnerships and a part of our government's responsibilities. So I just, I just want to pick out just a, a few key areas. I'm hoping that you've read this report and hopefully it's targeted some areas and, and thoughts. It's fair to say that with the assistance from Claire and, and if you like, Joe's similar report a couple of years ago, I've, I, I, I've written it this time. Claire and Joe did offer, but it was difficult for me to say what I wanted. So I, I said to, to Joe and Claire, let me write it and you fill in the missing gaps or answer some of the questions. So that, that's the way we approached it. Just to highlight some paragraphs which you might like to discuss later, but paragraph two, three, this is the, the Board of Borders to Coast Limited. Four independent non-executive directors, happy with that. Two partner fund nominated exec, exec directors, not too keen on that. That's me personally, two exec directors. I think it's fair to say that Lincolnshire didn't support that, but I've been interested in other, other people's views. And just to bring out in paragraph two, eight, you know, Borders to Coast, Borders to Coast is an investment management company now and effectively owned by 11 local authority pension funds. That's it in a nutshell. And I think we ought to just kind of bear that in mind all the way through. Two, nine, two, 10 and two, 11 kind of show you the exit routes or the entry routes if, if, if anyone ever wanted to come into Borders to Coast. And, and you'll see there's an example there where Northumberland died with Tyne and Wear, and that's reflected in, in the finances later on. Just wanted to mention the joint committee as well. Paragraph five, four. It's probably me, but, but that looks to me to be a huge meeting when you've got the 11 Pension Committee Chairs, representatives from Border to Coast, and there's normally quite a gathering of those. The two partner fund nominated non-executive directors attend, and I just don't think they should, but there we are, that's me. Scheme member representative. I mean, it must be a, it's, it must be a very difficult meeting to chair, that one. But in five, six, in the event of a major crisis or loss of confidence, then the shareholders will be able to vote out the directors, so that's good to know. Seven shows you the financial position and I looked at the, the Borders to Coast annual report and accounts and, and Claire helped me with quite a bit of the detailed information in there. And I'm pleased to say that in seven, four, work has started on this kind of what I call the cost benefit report of, of going down the pooling line. I'd be interested to see the outcome of that. Although I think it will be exceptionally difficult to kind of compare now with, oh, back in 2016, oh, very difficult. And then in eight, four, I've posed a number of questions and I'd, I'd just like, I'd just like everyone to kind of comment on this and I would welcome people's views. In, in particular, you know, are we comfortable with governance arrangements for Borders to Coast? And at that point, I will throw it open for debate and questions and comments, please. And please don't feel inhibited on this one. Mark, I think you're first.
Yeah, thanks, 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 Mr. Chairman. It, it's the subject of the non-executive directors, which, you know, you discussed. I've, I've got no problem with non-executive directors. The problem I've got, which I think you probably share, is that they're nominated from within the partner funds, as it were.
Yes.
Now, for me, that, that opens up a, a potential conflict of interest, because for me, non-executive directors should, should be, should, should have no conflict, should have no conflict of interest and have no object, or no problems if the partner funds were asked to nominate two non-executive directors who came from outside of the fund. You know, two, two, two retired pension professionals, say, you know, whatever. I think for me, that would be fine, because I think they would bring the necessary level of experience from their careers, but would be genuinely independent with no conflict of interest. So for me, I think, I think it's no issue with non-execs, but they have to be from external to the pension fund, even though pension fund members may agree to who they want. The people themselves should be external.
Well, I think you, I, I would, I mean, I think they should be truly independent, full stop. But, but I think you and I are, are on the same wavelength there, Mark. And, and I think it's fair to say that, that, and Joe can tell us, that Lincolnshire were opposed to that. I guess, I guess my worry is that it, it just looks too cosy. That, that's the expression I would, I would use. And, and, and it just leaves me with a bit of discomfort. But are there any other views? Oh, no, sorry, Gerry first. Sorry, Dave.
I must admit, you've answered the question about, I was going to ask you why you had this problem with the two partner funds nominated. I, I didn't realise they were internal fund people. I, I took the view, like Mark said, I thought they were external non-execs, even though they were nominated by partner funds. So I couldn't quite understand why you had the problem with that. So no, I do understand that. The other question I had was, I, I understood, Roger, that you have meet, do you not have meetings with with other pension fund boards? Is it not, not specifically with Borders to Coast, I suppose? No. So you have meetings with them and discuss it, but that's part of the process, but yeah.
No, no. Well, to answer that, Borders to Coast Pension Board Chairs do meet generally twice a year. I mean, obviously it was, it's, it's far better, you know, when we can actually meet round a table. We did try one virtual, but, but I mean, the problem is, Gerry, that, that the, I think it's fair to say that on some of the pension boards within Borders to Coast, the turnover of chairs is, well, let's just say it's a bit volatile in some, in, in, in some administrative authorities. And so, you know, it's difficult to get the continuity, to get the debate going. I mean, I've, I've tried to raise the governance arrangements of Borders to Coast previously, but without success. So that's why I was keen to, you know, kind of do this one again through, through our own pension board. And you'll see further down, there are some questions as to whether or not we ought to share this with, with my fellow chairs.
The other thing you've said, Roger, isn't it, that other boards don't necessarily get all the Borders to Coast information? I know, I know we do, but some pension boards don't, don't get all the documents. Is that, is that correct?
That's what we're led to understand, yes. Yeah, they won't get the pink papers. And some of them don't, I don't think, I don't think get much at all.
So it's very difficult for the board, those boards to do anything in terms of reviewing the governance arrangements for Borders to Coast, isn't it? I don't see how they can make any sort of comment on it, really.
Well, they could jump up and down in their own authority and talk to the, the section 151 officer. And, 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 and at worst, at worst, I mean, if they really wanted to, they could call in the cavalry by going to the pensions regulator and say that, that they're being debarred of, of information.
And, and are they aware that other boards like us get all the information? Are they aware that they're, you know, certain boards get, get all the information, certain boards don't? They're aware of that presumably.
They have been told.
Yeah, yeah.
Joe, can I just bring in, in Dave first? Otherwise I'd be in trouble. Dave?
Yes, thank you, Roger, thank you. In a way, Gerry's already been, got, he got ahead of me on the, because I was saying, I was going to say the same thing, Roger, that you do meet with other chairs, don't you? And, but we've covered that. I mean, can I just ask a question? That I'm not sure what the, the, the answer to this is, but the, the pooling arrangements and all these, these different, there was 11, weren't there? 11 pools, I think.
No, no, eight, eight.
Eight, sorry. There was 11 members of the, the Border to Coast, I think, wasn't there? And then it became 10. But anyway, MHCLG, it was their, it was their view, wasn't it? It was through their proposals that the pooling arrangements came into being.
Well, I think it was George Osborne, in fairness.
But we go back to, it was a government-led sort of initiative that we, we've, we've been on this journey with over the last few years. And albeit, from what you're saying in here, that the, I mean, the, the Border to Coast is wholly owned by the pension fund, isn't it? All the combined funds. Doesn't the, doesn't the MHCLG now have any interest in what's going on? Do they actually have reports going back? Because we're saying, aren't we, that there'll be a, a cost benefit report coming forward to see how well that's gone and what's to see how well that's gone and what savings. I just wonder what role, I've never heard what MHCLG think of all this now, some years on. Do we get anything back from that route?
Joe, I think I'll hand that over to you, please, to start with.
Thank you, yeah, there's, there's a few different areas there that, that I can pick up on. Um, if I start with the, um, the conflict of interest concern with the partner fund non-executive directors, um, and absolutely you are right, at Lincolnshire, we decided we would not put anyone forward at any of the times that there's been requests for these. Um, it was for each fund to take it away and discuss it with their monitoring officer, um, and their section one, five, one, et cetera, to decide whether or not they could see any conflict of interest. Um, and we were not comfortable with that. The push for those roles, though, has really been, um, put out from Chris Hitchin, the chairman of the board at Border to Coast. Um, and I think in previous areas where he has, he has been chairman at Rail Pen, for example, they had shareholder non-executive directors, which is what the partner fund non-executive director is, is the equivalent to as well. Um, and, and his belief is that it really does improve the governance, um, because, and also particularly with, with this, in, it's really beneficial in helping keep that public sector ethos within the board, because there are other non-execs who are brought in because of their expertise, be it in investment, in audit, or, or whatever. Um, but obviously, a lot of those don't have that public sector background to understand perhaps some of the differences in running a normal investment management company versus what, running one that is, as you say, wholly owned by local authority pension, local authorities. Um, and so there are some different thoughts and, and actions that they have to consider. Um, so.
Joe, can I just interrupt there? And, and do you believe what Chris Hitchens thinks has actually happened in Borders to Coast? You see, I, I probably have a cynical view that this, this actually protects Chris Hitchens as chairman and, and makes it more cosy, but, but that is probably a very cynical view, but, um, but I just wondered, you, you actually see it in operation, so I just wondered how, how you feel.
Yeah, I, um, to be fair, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with it as long as it's filled by other funds other than our own. Um, because I, I do, I do feel that it is probably quite difficult, because they want somebody that has quite experience of the pension fund, it can't be a chairman, um, obviously, so, you know, we did have one chairman stand down as chairman, so he could be a ned. Um, he's based now at that, that authority, then discussed it further and weren't comfortable with that position being put forward. Um, what it, what we do hear back, though, is we have a informal shareholder meeting, um, generally on the same day as the joint committee, and those partner fund neds will feed back to the shareholder group, um, and the shareholder group can feed back to those neds if there's any concerns they've got, or anything that they want a, a more of a view on from them. So there haven't been any concerns raised so far. Um, the, the feedback we get from the, the people participating in the roles, it definitely doesn't come across that it's just a cosy relationship, I think they do ask some quite challenging questions. Um, they're generally people that are put forward, are people that have had a lot of experience as, as councillors and on the pensions committee. Um, so I think they're, they're definitely more than able to hold their own.
Okay.
And I think that there is some benefit to it, however, I still do have that, that slight concern about the conflict of interest and how that can be managed.
Thank you for that, thank you.
Um, so on that one, on the, um, the question about some pension boards not seeing the information from the joint committee, um, that's something that we've discussed at the officer operations group as well, to try and understand people's practices. Um, and as I say, we have always shared the papers with, the full papers with both the committee and the board, um, because obviously the board have a role for the overall governance and oversight of the pension fund, and without understanding what's happening with Borders to Coast, I think that must be incredibly difficult, particularly as they take on more and more of our assets. Um, so some of it has been down to, um, individual fund, uh, legal teams that are saying, no, you can't share it. So there's, it doesn't seem to be any real, well, as a, as a fund, when we've checked and we've had advice, and we are perfectly happy that we can share that information, but it is a fund's decision, so those boards should be raising it with their administering authorities. Um, then on to, to Dave's question about MHCLG, um, yeah, absolutely, the initial guidance came out in 2015, and we had to put our submissions in for 2016. Uh, there were some new guidance that came out for consultation, I think it was in March nineteen, um, which they had an awful lot of responses to, um, most of them not particularly positive in the questions they were asking and how they were proposing to implement new guidance, because across the eight different asset pools, there are some very different setups. So Border to Coast is actually still held up as kind of the poster child, um, for the asset pool, um, in, in the way it has done things and the governance that it has around, around it. Um, but MHCLG are still very much interested. Um, every, it, it's, it's reduced a little bit now, but it was probably every six months, uh, the pools were having to send returns into MHCLG to show how they measured against the submissions we put in in July sixteen, about how many assets were coming under management, what savings were being seen, et cetera. Um, and there's a, there's a cross-pool collaboration group that still meets generally quarterly, um, and MHCLG are normally invited along to that and will come and listen to what's going on. Um, and, and what's happening at the moment is the, the pools are working with MHCLG, they will be coming out with another questionnaire and consultation, um, for statutory guidance for the asset pools, and we're expecting that to come out sometime this year. Um, so they're working, there's, there's, there's one key contact, um, Theresa Clay, um, who has thankfully been at MHCLG the whole time, because a lot of the other areas are moving about, who's got a very good understanding of actually the pools and the differences and how they work. Um, so we are expecting some more, another consultation on the guidance coming out. The issue, um, is that this guidance will probably now have to be statutory because of the issue with investment guidance that came out last year to do with investing, um, that got overturned at the, the Court of Appeals, so MHCLG have kind of had to go back to the drawing board there. Um, and one of the big issues for a lot of the pools is if the guidance, um, is too prescriptive, um, or not prescriptive enough, it will have different impacts on different funds and different pools. So where Border to Coast has gone down the route of being FCA-regulated, um, all funds have committed that they will, uh, transition their assets in, some when actually it's not been the most cost-effective way of managing money. South Yorkshire is a, a very good example there, where they had it mainly done internally. Um, there are benefits they're seeing, but actually the, the cost-saving benefits will take a number of years to come through, and then there are other pools that have not gone down the same route and have, perhaps it could be said, more or less carried on as they always have, with perhaps collaborating a little bit here and there, um, will, will react differently depending on how the guidance comes out. So there's a lot of questions as to how that might come out, but MHCLG are still very much on our cases, um, wanting to see savings and the work that's being done with Borders to Coast, which Claire is involved in the working group to look at these cost savings will be really helpful in feeding that evidence back to MHCLG. Um, I think, hopefully that's covered all the questions so far.
No, thanks, thanks for that, Joe, yeah, that, that has. Um, are there any, incidentally, Cheryl, has, um, um, Kim appeared?
No, she hasn't, Chairman, she, uh, what I'll do, if she doesn't arrive before the end of the meeting, I'll submit her apologies for today.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, are there any other questions? Before, I would like you to look at eight, paragraph eight dot four at some stage, or what, before we, before we finish on this one, but are there any other general questions? Has Joe answered all, all, all the questions that you raised, Dave and Gerry?
Can, sorry, Roger, can I just ask, Roger, sorry, if I'm just joking. Um, can I just say, Joe, what the consequences then for those pools that are not, shall we say, playing fully by the expected rules? What will the consequences be for them in the, let's say, the months and years that are going to go by? Uh, it, it's not without, I mean, if they're not complying fully, or they're just carrying on in the spirit of what they're supposed to do, there's got to be an end game, hasn't there? I mean, I think Border to Coast seem to be, as you say, doing quite well, uh, in their, in, in their approach, but if others aren't, are they going to get a big stick out to them, or, or what do you think, please?
Um, it's a really difficult one, because until we actually see what MHCLG are now proposing for the new guidance, um, it's difficult to, to know. I mean, there was always the stick within the guidance previously, that you could be referred to the Secretary of State, and that they could, um, potentially, you know, they would have the ability to say, right, you need to do X, Y or Z. So I'm sure in the statutory guidance, there will still be something there that the Secretary of State can step in and enforce, um, be a fund to transition across to a pool or whatever, but we just don't know at the moment. And as I say, the pools are, are all, there, there's kind of very different types of pool. If you look at Northern Pool compared to Access, which is kind of the southeast, southern, um, counties, um, Central and Brunel are probably more similar to Border to Coast, Wales is standalone on its own. Um, so they're, they are very, very different. Um, but until we actually see that first draft from MHCLG, I'm afraid I can't, I can't say what, what their stick may or may not be.
I guess, Joe, just, just, just coming on that, because obviously, I, I remember when the, the pooling arrangement was set up, you know, one of the sort of, you know, the main political drivers seemed, that seemed to be behind it all, was that it would, you know, it would reduce costs. Um, but I'm, but I'm guessing if, if different funds and, and different pools have got different arrangements internally, any form of benchmarking between pools must be really, really difficult, because, 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 you know, anybody can say, say, well, you, you can't benchmark us against, uh, uh, against this pool, because we do things differently. And, and I'm guessing the, the problem is, if everybody's doing things differently, any form of benchmarking to see who's been playing, who's been, who's been saving costs, it's going to be really, really difficult.
Well, I think you're right there, Mark, but I, I guess, I mean, forgive me, but I, I'm not that worried about what the other pools are doing, I'm more concerned about Borders to Coast, because I'm more concerned about Lincolnshire's position, et cetera, and protecting our members' benefits. That, that is my kind of focus and helping Joe as much as possible. Um, you, you know, I mean, I have stories about some of the other pools, one of them in particular wants to start kind of taking on, um, external clients, and I just think that is totally wrong, but, but, you know, I don't really want to get involved in that. But Gerry, forgive me, I should have come to you.
No, Roger, it's not a question, really, I was just going to really go through your points. I mean, overall, I would say, and given Gerry's feedback as well, that the governance arrangements are, are pretty strong, actually, um, and, and the structure and attendance of the joint committee, I still think is, is reasonable, given your misgivings I accept about the nominated non-execs. Um, so overall, I would say that the governance is, is, looks pretty good, it's, it's a very good paper that's been written, by the way. Um, and the only other thing is, the cost benefits are critical, because that was part of the reason, obviously, for setting them up, was to make cost savings, so I think we, you know, how we, it is very difficult to get those, that report, but it is something we need to, to see, certainly. Um, and the only other point, sorry, the other point you made, should the board have discussions with other boards within Border to Coast? Well, I think your, your bi- biannually, biannual conversation would be sufficient from my point of view, I think, on that score, just covering some of the points in eight point four.
You know, just before I come to that, Gerry, just, just one comment there, I was going to ask, I'll, I'll give Andrew notice, I might get to make a comment as well. Um, Mark, you mentioned that, that one of the drivers was, was, was cost savings, but I mean, the other driver, particularly from the treasury, was infrastructure investment. Um, and, and that seems to have kind of, I don't know, appears to have been lost, except for, I think it's fair to say, the LPFA and Lancashire, who appear to be deep into, um, infrastructure, but I may be wrong there. But Andrew, I was going to ask you, you know, I mean, you are, you, you kind of came into this as the, um, um, strategic director, and I just wondered, you know, whether you've got any views, any worries, any concerns, because, you know, I, I mean, you and I have spoken anyway, but, but, but if you have, then if we can help in any way as a pension board, then we'll take them forward, certainly.
Uh, thanks, Chair, yeah, so, um, I guess for me, the whole, the whole principle of pooling at the moment, I, I, from my own personal perspective, is jury's out on it, I think, probably for me. I know that, um, clearly, uh, we've been a key part in developing the pool, and we're very lucky and fortunate to have somebody of Joe's calibre as our head of pensions, and I think the entire, uh, board would agree with him on that. So I think our, our interests are well-served by the fact is that we've got somebody of Joe involved with it and round the table and supporting that decision-making, and I, you know, the proof in the pudding will be once the actual returns come, come on it. I guess, from a, from a perspective of the governance side of things, which I know this board would be more interested in, you're not alone in, in, in that feedback, and having sat in a number of the section one, five, one strategy meetings now, I think different, different councils have different views on it, and the fact is that there's eleven around the table, whatever, it, I don't think anybody will ever fully agree on what's the best way of running it. Um, I can, I can make the commitment to you as a board that, that, you know, you know, future discussions, that, that these, these issues continue to be aired, and our views will continue to be aired. And I think you've all made some very valid points today, that I'm, I'm happy to feed, feed in as, 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 as and when appropriate, really. Um, but yeah, I think it's very much a, a, a watching brief from my perspective at the moment.
Okay, thank you for that, Andrew. Um, if, if there are no other questions, can we just move to, um, eight dot four, perhaps just run through those very quickly, I'm conscious of time. Um, I mean, I think the, the message I'm getting is that we're pretty comfortable with the governance arrangements, and as Andrew has rightly said, you know, we've got Joe kind of looking after our interests as well, so I think we, we, we seem okay on that one. Um, I just did wonder whether a board rep should attend the public part of a joint committee meeting, but I don't know what you think on that one, Joe, would it be a waste of time, or what do you think?
Um, could, could I just, first of all, because there was the question about the structure of the joint committee, could I just provide a brief update on that first, please, Chairman?
Of course, yes.
Because, um, you know, as, as you rightly say, there's a lot of people listed there that actually attend that, JC, um, and the last couple of joint committees, there's been some discussion as to actually how best can the joint committee be made most effective, um, and what they're trialling at the moment, and they need to give it a few meetings to see if it works. Um, putting the informal shareholder meeting to one side, because that's separate, um, ahead of the joint committee, there's now a pre-funds-only meeting, um, which is the chairman. Officers do attend, but officers are generally very silent in all of this unless specifically asked a question or needing to clarify something. Where officers are very much there to support our chairman, um, in, in their role there, um, other than the Ian Bainbridge from Tynan Weir, who helps, um, helps manage the joint committee as, as in his role as chairman of the officer operations group. So the funds-only meeting is held now, um, to ensure that there's ample time for the funds to discuss from the papers what is most important from them, and if there's any joint areas that they really want to, to grill Border to Coast on. When it moves into the, the public joint committee, um, the, the papers there are, some are presented by officers, some are presented by members of Border to Coast, um, but what we've also done now is separate out the performance reports to the exempt part, when the public out the performance reports to the exempt part when the public have gone. Officers are now presenting those performance reports to raise any concerns, ask any questions of border to coast as the manager. So there's been quite a change in how border to coast, it is now feeling much more run by the pension funds rather than by border to coast. So there's been quite a change in the way the joint committee is now being run. So as I say, that's, that's only been bedded in, being bedded in at the moment. The last committee was really the first time that whole process was tried. So it'll be tried for a few more times before feedback is taken from the various joint committee members to see if that is working better. But initial response was actually that was the more positive and helpful way to manage the joint committee. Now I've forgotten what your question was, Roger, I'm afraid.
You've probably answered it.
Whether somebody should attend?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I think as it's being held virtually, it's a far easier ask than when the meetings are held, if they do go back to being held in person. And it is a public meeting, so absolutely anybody could, could listen in. And it might be worth it, you know, even just to try it the once for some of the, the board members, so that you, you have an idea of what the discussions are, what they're like. And that then may raise some further questions that we can, you know, through, through council strangle, take back to the board.
Okay.
The joint committee, sorry.
Well, I think I might, unless anybody else wants to, I might tune into one of those at some stage. There's one in March, isn't there?
Ninth of March is the next one.
Yeah. I'm encouraged by the fact that, you know, the joint committee is now in control of the business as opposed to borders to coast. And, and I guess that was one of my worries. So you've, you've kind of made me sleep a bit easier as a result of that. I think we've talked about structure and attendance at the joint committee, and you've already talked to that anyway. Should the board have discussions with other boards within borders coast? And do you think we should share the report with them? I don't know. I don't know how you feel about that, Joe.
I think it would, it would be probably be something useful at the next half yearly meeting of all the boardmen, the board chairs of border to coast to, to explain what, what you've done here. And they may want to repeat it within their own boards. So I don't, I don't see a disbenefit in doing that.
And I mean, it is a public report anyway. So you'd have no problem with me sharing it with my fellow chairs?
No.
Are the rest of the pensions board happy with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah, certainly.
I think, okay. Well, we're pressing, I mean, you've already answered the question about the, the report on savings. And no doubt you'll keep us updated, Joe, with the, anything that comes out of MHCLG, is it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Are there any other questions or comments? I don't know. You're going to record all that, Cheryl, but look forward to your minute. Any other questions?
No, that's everything, Chairman.
Okay. So happy to note the report. And I don't know whether any actions will, probably some actions may come out of it, Cheryl. We'll look at the board minutes anyway. So let's move on to item nine, training needs. And I think this is for you, Claire, please.
It is. Thank you very much. This item brings to the board the normal opportunity to discuss training needs and to review any training that you have attended during the last three months. In addition to this today, the report brings to the board a formalised process for recording annual training. If we look first at that annual training log requirements, and then I'll hand over to you for you to discuss any training that you've undertaken since the last board meeting. At the October board meeting, the process for recording training was discussed, and it was agreed that officers would go away and investigate best practice in this area and come back to the board with a process and a template. Appendix eight, the report is that template. And what we would like is for all board members to complete this on an annual basis, recording the training undertaken. And after the meeting, subject to your agreement, we'll circulate a copy of that for you all. This will capture the training that you've attended, the topics that have been covered, and the time that you've spent. And we'd also really like suggestions from you for future training, which you feel would be of benefit for you and for the whole board. We would like the form to be completed annually, covering financial year from April to March. And for that then to be submitted back to officers, for that to be fed back to meetings in July. I don't know if anyone has any questions on the new training log arrangements, or if you're happy to come onto the recommendations to cover that at the end.
Can I just ask one question? Is it retrospective? So have we got to do it from last April? Or?
Ideally, yes. I appreciate, Roger, your very diligent and send us something quarterly. So maybe if you could pick up the final quarter of the year, and anyone who sent any records for the year to date, if they could just pick up the remaining part of the year, that would be very helpful. It just means that when we're coming around to July and pulling together plans, we've got a picture from everybody. And it also means it's kind of standardising the timelines for that, particularly if we look at that from 21, 20.
Okay. Any, any questions on that? Everyone happy? Silence means presumably yes. So do you want us to talk about our, our training over the last quarter then?
Just, just before you do, I will just bring to your attention the upcoming training that there is for the board and the committee. And this will be held on Thursday, the 11th of February, from 10 till 12. And it will be an opportunity for you to meet the funds new actuary Barnet Waddingham. And appointments aren't out for that yet, but they will come out very shortly. And then, yeah, I'm very happy to pass over to you for any training that's been done in the last three months.
Anyone want to go first on their training over the last three months?
I don't mind going first, Mr. Chairman. All I've done is the borders to coast annual conference, which is on the form. So unfortunately, that's all I've, I've done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Gerry, I think you wanted to speak.
Yeah. Well, I attended the border to coast annual conference. I think that was just before the last board meeting. So I've not sort of, I hadn't picked it up. But all I've really since then, there's just been, I've attended a couple of the webinars from Hyman's Robinson on the keeping LGPS connected. And there was a tackling the LGS, LGPS administrative challenge as well, again, run by Hyman's Robinson, which I attended. So that's, that's all. Since the last meeting.
Right. Thank you, Gerry. Dave, have you volunteered in any?
Yeah, all I attended really, I mean, I have, we know, if I may say, I do read the Hyman's updates regularly and that. But I did attend the webinar on the MacLeod. I was listening on that. I mean, it just really gave me an idea of how much work was going to be involved. But I did, I did actually do that one earlier in the last three months. But nothing more.
Okay. Dave, thank you. I mean, for myself, I've, I've, I've attended, I think, 12 in the last quarter. I guess the highlights of those were, there was a professional pensions and Mercer DB and DC conference. And I thought there were two really good sessions on effective boards. And I, I thought they were pretty good. And if anyone wants the slides, I can certainly send them on. I attended the, one of the Hyman's ones as well, tackling the admin challenge, which I think you did, Gerry. There's an outfit called Windmark Pension Chair Audience with the regulator. That was frightening, quite frankly, particularly for private sector schemes. And then I also attended the PLSA trustee conference in December. And then finally, River and Mercantile, what is on your 2021 agenda, which I found quite interesting. But Claire's got a record of the others. But if anyone wants any details, let me know. Any other comments on this paper? I think there are some recommendations here, aren't there, Cheryl?
Yeah, mainly just to note the report, Chairman. So unless there's any training that you wish to request.
Well, I've not got any to request. I think hopefully most, not all of us will be able to attend the internal one. And I did notice that, Claire, you sent something out either yesterday or today, I think yesterday, for a Barnet Waddingham sit for course, pension board members, which I thought, I think that was the one that you and I went to, Dave, last year and got stuck going to Leeds. Anyway, it took us ages to get there, if you recall.
Yes, it was, Roger. Yes, that's right. I did notice that you'd sent it through yesterday, Claire, didn't you? It was, it's the spring board seminar, which I will probably book on to as well.
Yeah. And if anyone does, if they just want to drop John or myself a line, then we can get that arranged for you.
Yeah. And John's very efficient. He's already, he's sorted me. Thank you.
But there is also an update event on the 26th of January, isn't there? An LGPS update event, which Claire sent, which I've registered for on the 26th.
Yeah, an event run by the LGA in the morning.
Yeah.
Oh, there is, Gerry. Yeah, I've registered for that.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll note that report. If anyone's got any specific training needs, presumably they're either talk to Claire or, or Joe or, or John. Okay. So shall we move on to, I think, to the final item, which is the work programme, please? And I think that's you again, Claire.
It is. It is. Yes. So this is just the normal opportunity for the board to look at the future work plan for upcoming meetings. So the current work plan is set out, had appendix aid to the report. And then if we look specifically at the next meeting, we've got the normal quarterly items on the fund update, the admin update, and the employer monthly submissions. We've also got the twice yearly update on the temporary bank accounts. At the March meeting, we will also pick up the annual review of policies, the fund business plan and budget, and then a review of the accounting policies in preparation for the financial statements for 2021. And there haven't been any other items raised during the meeting so far for that meeting or future meetings. But if there is anything else you would like included, I'm very happy to, to make a note of that now.
Or later, if possible. You know, something might crop up at that, at the, at the February session, the end of the spring seminar.
Yeah.
Unless, of course, anyone's got any other ideas at this stage? No? Were you, you were, at this stage, you're just commenting on March, just noting July and October?
Yeah. So the, the details for July and October are, are, there'll be an opportunity at future meetings in March and July to put anything further on to those, unless there's something specifically you'd like built in now for those meetings.
No, Unisys pension regulator data scores are already on. So just to remind him.
Yeah. No, so the data scores are on there every other meeting and dispersed with the temporary bank accounts, so that they're being picked up every other meeting as well.
Anyone, any, any comments?
I've just got one thing to raise with you, Mr. Chairman, that the March meeting could potentially, could potentially be my last meeting. Because obviously, we've got elections in May. So just sort of float, float that one, depending upon obviously what happens in May and then in the new council. If I, if I am hopefully re-elected, I will certainly volunteer to stay on the board. But obviously, things depend on, on the voters in May. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we wish you every success, Mark. And thank you for offering to continue if you are duly elected. I guess what we ought to discuss is, is the dates for 2022.
Just maybe just before we move on to that, can, can Joe just come in? It's about the, the board membership, which Mark has just mentioned.
Thank you. Thanks, Claire. Yeah, it was just that July 21 is obviously the start of a new four year period for the board. Well, the, we had a change of 15, we came in into being in 2017, Dave and Mark were both up for renomination because the first periods were a two year term for them. So in 2021, Dave as the scheme member rep and Mark as the LCC employer rep will both again be up for renomination. And I do have to just check, I did check one thing on the terms of reference and forgot to check the maximum number of terms that we had said any member could, could stand. I was looking to bring that to the March meeting. But obviously, Mark, Mark's raised it now. So I will be checking on that. But we will have to look at the process for nomination and reapportment to those two roles.
Yeah. No, I was going to ask you that. I think I've got a feeling it's two terms. But it's whether or not we did something special because Mark and Dave only served two years, you know, because we wanted continuity on the board, didn't we? Which is why we did it. So I don't know. We'll have to look at the rules.
Yeah, I'm just, I wasn't gonna say I'm just opening it now, but my system has decided to die on me. So I shan't open it now. But as I say, I was going to bring something to, to the March committee meeting. I think, I think it was two terms. But I don't know that we extend, we put anything specifically in the terms of reference to say that those that did the initial half term would be able to do an additional term on top. So I will check into that. But I'll actually, I'll let you know tomorrow anyway, just so that you're aware for, for those, if your terms will be ending after the March meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, so I'm just, on that as well, potentially, could you also check that, again, if I was successful in, in May, but couldn't serve on the board, if there'd be any restrictions on me volunteering for the pensions committee?
There definitely wouldn't be. No, you would still be able to, if you weren't on the board, you would be able to be on the pensions committee. Yes.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you.
Gerry, I can't remember whether I've asked you to come in.
Yeah, all it was, Roger. Thank you, Chairman. It's in Claire's report about section two, about when the pension board meets, they're always in the afternoon of the case. Apart from this one, I think. I don't think there's been no committee meeting this morning, is there? I thought it quite useful because I attended the committee meeting in December. Obviously, it was a virtual one. I find that quite useful. To me, it, it sort of makes sense in a way to have them separate to, to give some aid, to allow you to attend the committee meeting. I mean, I know you can attend both, but it's a bit of an overkill. I guess for Joe and Claire, perhaps it's easiest if they're both on the same day. And that gives you a bit of time to think about the, the issues that have arisen at the committee meeting, to review at the board meeting. So just to throw that out really. So there's a future date.
There was a pensions committee meeting this morning, Gerry?
There was.
Yeah.
No, apologies. I didn't see the paper. I didn't, didn't see that. That's my mistake. Sorry.
Well, if you'd have blinked, you'd have missed it, actually.
Right.
It didn't, it only lasted about an hour and 10 minutes, which surprised me.
There was a forum in December, which I did actually attend, anyway.
Yeah. Well, that, that was the specific to kind of the investment managers, the December one. Dave, do, do, have you got a, I mean, you and I have talked about this, haven't we? We, we two oldies.
Yeah, yeah. What about them being on the same day?
Yes. Yeah.
I mean, the view is, I mean, it's, it was deemed more continuity, just so that we all were together morning and the, in the afternoon, wanted. So it's, I think it cropped up for you and I once, where we sat through the pension committee and then had two hour lunch period to find something to do, didn't we? And then we went back at two o'clock. But we have, it's not so bad when it's virtual, is it?
Sorry, Roger. I was actually thinking about it. If, if, if you're travelling, then it's probably easier. Sorry, Roger. I was actually thinking about it. If, if, if you're travelling, then it's probably easy if they are both on the same day because you could probably attend both. You know, I mean, I've got, it's not that far, but an hour's travel. So it's always a big problem both on the same day, I suppose, thinking about it. Sorry. Just, uh, it's different when it's virtual, isn't it?
The, 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 the only thing I would ask Joe and, and, um, and Claire is and, and you know, this is not a criticism and, and no doubt this has been going off at Lincolnshire for years and years and years. But if you take today's pensions committee, they were considering reports up to the thirtieth of September. And today is the seventh of January. Um, and, and I, I just question whether that is, is, is good kind of good business, good governance in that, um, basically that they don't know, I, I know you do the, the, the monthly reports on, on investment values and performance and what have you. But um, I guess I've always been used to a meeting kind of six to seven weeks after the quarter end, which gives them investment managers and, and, and everybody else time to get the values and the performance and what have you. But, but maybe this has been going on at Lincolnshire for a long time and maybe you wouldn't want to change it. Um, Joe.
Yeah. If I can respond to that, um, Claire and I have had a number of discussions about this. Historically, um, we used to actually end up doing quasi quarters to try and bring them as close as we could, which caused a completely different load of problems because our quarter might be December to February. So that that is definitely something I would not like to go back to. Um, there are two that we potentially could move around. The, the issue we have is that to get quarterly reporting from managers can take up to six weeks.
Yeah.
Um, we need time to be able to write reports.
Yeah.
Um, and then generally we try and get them to committee services about two weeks before the committee. So the, um, I, I think we're one of the, we're, we're helpful. We try and give them plenty of time to be able to get them sorted and get them out. So that's really nine weeks. We could look to swap the December and January meetings round. That wouldn't cause any problems. Um, because December is always a manager presentation meeting. Um, and January is the normal quarterly. Um, and the other one that we would be able to swap round would probably be the, um, June and July meetings, again, where June is a manager presentation and July is the quarterly meeting. Um, the other thing is we, we often don't get the same when the meetings are because they have to fit in with the rest of the council's structure of committee meetings. But I think it would be very difficult to pull it any earlier than nine weeks. Um, after quarter end. What we do try and do, though, whilst we say we're reporting up to a certain date, um, we do provide updates of anything else that's important that has happened in the intervening period. And if there were to be particular issues, um, we would raise them then. And we also raise things in the monthly letters that we send out. Um, so I think there, there's two that we could potentially swap around without too much difficulty. Um, speaking on a purely selfish point, um, is that one of the benefits of them being in the same day is very much for Claire and I in that it's all done in one day. But also that we have twelve committee, uh, so, uh, we have eight um, committee and or board meetings across the year. Um, if we then move the boards on to say a different week, that would move that up to twelve, which makes twelve weeks of the year that we're unable to take holiday. Um, and we don't take holiday together. And with all the other things that we have to do throughout the year. So that's the purely selfish side that I thought I would put forward in, in the ease of us getting, I was going to say getting them over with, but so that's probably not the most pleasant way of putting it. Getting them done in the same day.
No, well, well, it was, it was Dave and I who had, um, we had a long two hours, didn't we, Dave? But, but look, Joe, there's a compromise here. Would you and Claire look at the possibility of reversing the meeting? Because I think that is a really good idea, actually, because you know, the meeting mid-December could then consider or even early December would be considering the thirtieth of September. I think that'd be good. And ditto, um, ditto June and July. I think, I think that would probably work. And so I think everyone's fairly happy with having both meetings on, on the same day. So you've won.
No, definitely. And we can change that without, without any, um, because the meeting's already been set up anyway. We'll be able to swap those over very easily.
Perhaps you'd just mention it to Eddie as a matter of courtesy, if, if, if you wouldn't mind.
We'll discuss it with him. Yes.
Yeah. See whether he's happy, please. Um, are there any other questions or comments, please? If not, I think we can incorporate what we've, um, said on that, um, in the minute, um, which I think brings us to the end of the meeting, doesn't it? Am I right?
It does, Chairman. Yes.
So thank you very much for your attendance. Um, many just managed to get it within four o'clock, but thanks very much for your attendance. I found it very helpful today. Um, enjoyed the discussion on borders to coast in particular. So thank you. And, um, I guess stay safe and hope to see you, um, soon. Okay. Cheers. Thanks. Take care. Night.